The concern that I shared with you a few years ago when I came had to do with community planning, and you can see in 2006, less than a third of residents gave positive ratings. Now, forty-five percent's nearly half. So, you're moving in the right direction. Still opportunities, I think, to do better, but I think the city's definitely moving in the right path. In addition, when you see how you stack up to other communities in the metropolitan Kansas City area, what this chart shows you, the blue bar kind of from the lowest to best city in the region, the vertical line is the regional average, and then the yellow dot shows where Blue Springs is at. And you can see in most areas, you're at or above the regional average. Two areas where you're lagging slightly behind have to do with maintenance of streets and the overall kind of enforcement of building and property maintenance codes. Those are two areas that you've seen improvement on, so you definitely are closing the gap. The other thing that you'll see in your report is in a number of cases, we've kind of helped you try to identify if you had limited resources, where are you likely to get the most bang for your investment in resources? And it's not a perfect situation, but it helps you identify what is important to residents, and given their relative levels of satisfaction, where might you make a difference? And what's plotted on here is you go from the left to right is the relative importance of each of the items that was assessed on the survey, and as you go from the bottom to top, that's the relative levels of satisfaction. And the items that end up in the bottom right quadrant tend to be more important to residents, and the overall ratings tend to be lower. And we found over, really studying hundreds of communities, that if you focus on those areas, you're likely to see significant improvements in the future. And one of the things you focused on the last couple of years is transportation issues and planning. Those were high priorities in previous surveys, and I think that's one of the reasons you've seen so much improvement, is because you have been putting resources in areas that residents care the most about. When it comes to public safety issues, again, we assess a number of areas of public safety, and you'll see most of them have held steady, but there have been some areas that have seen some significant improvement over the past couple of years: local traffic laws, visibility of police in neighborhoods, your outreach and dare service programs, and the overall responsiveness, ambulance service have all gone up significantly. There have been some decreases, though, from a couple of years ago. If you look at municipal courts, it's down from sixty-two to fifty-five, but the long-term trend is still favorable in some of those areas to at least keep your eyes on as you move forward into the future. In addition, when you see where you stack up on public safety services, you can see it's still lagging behind a little bit when it comes to how quickly police respond compared to the regional average. All in all, balance is out about average, but I think this is an area, as you move forward, that you will probably want to focus resources on in the future to make sure that residents feel good about public safety services. And when you looked at things in this matrix that I explained to you before, the items that are all in the bottom right quadrant all have to do with police services, mainly visibility and efforts to prevent crime. And it doesn't mean that you have to have police be totally visible all over the place, but depending on how you deploy your police efforts, residents have to understand what those methods are. So, some communities that mainly put their police out in arterials and not in neighborhoods can have the perception that they're not as safe, even though response times are better. And we found that those communities often have to educate their residents about those issues. The other area we looked at or some of the others have to do with communication. Your Blue Springs magazine is the dominant impact tool for your community when it comes to how people get information about city events. You can see seventy-eight percent, newspapers second, and then you can see your website, actually at thirty percent, is above the national average at twenty-four percent. So, you actually have pretty good utilization of your website comparatively. TV at twenty-seven percent, Mayor's newsletters hitting about one in every seven households. When you see your trends on communication, several areas have seen significant improvement, but you'll notice when it comes to the availability of information, just compared to a year ago, or really, it's almost two years ago, went up from sixty-one percent to seventy-six percent, significant improvement there. Efforts to keep residents informed about local issues is also up significantly from a couple of years ago and from the four-year trend. And you can see the perception of your webpage, which may be one of the reasons it has higher utilization than the national average, is also up twelve points from four years ago. In addition, when you see how you stack up on the communication side, this is definitely one of the city's strengths. You can see you're significantly above the regional average when it comes to the availability of information about city programs and services, and also how well you keep residents informed. Next topic is city maintenance, and this is, I think, one of the areas to continue focusing on as you move forward. It's been an area, you've been making some progress, but certainly is an area that's very important to residents. You can see a lot of up arrows on here. You'll notice that, for example, neighborhood street maintenance compared to just about two years ago is up twelve points, but you can see there was a decrease from 2006 to 2009. But the overall trend for your preservation of downtown, you can see, is up seventeen points. And pretty much just about every area in the maintenance category has seen some significant progress over the last couple of years, and I would suggest that's probably the result of investments and other things that the city has done. Though I'm not here and I haven't seen them, I would guess that these didn't happen by accident, given the methodology and the way the survey's been administered each time. You can see when it comes to the regional comparisons, you can see you're about average, a little lower in a couple of cases, a little above in a couple others, but you're definitely moving in the right track and closing the gaps where you lag behind. And assuming you continue to make the investments in the things residents care the most about, you'll likely see those gaps close or even be surpassed by the next time you conduct your survey. And when it comes to the top priorities, you can see street maintenance and sidewalks, those fundamental infrastructure items. Those are the things that, at the end of the day, when we conduct surveys like this, that's one of the things that has to... And even when you make investments in those areas, we've found that a lot of communities, they have positive impacts on public safety and other perceptions. Miami-Dade County actually took an active strategy of making investments in infrastructure to address public safety concerns. In other words, they take a street that was no lighting, basically dark, the streets were crumbling, the sidewalks looked bad, they'd fix them up, and next thing you know, residents felt safe there, just because the infrastructure was new and the lighting was better. And that may be something that you're looking at, public safety issues combined with maintenance may be something that you can do as well. Yes, sir?
Give back one slide.
Sure.
That dot on the snow removal on city streets, it's not inconsistent with the information here, and it's not consistent with where we're at either. If you look on the survey page eleven there, you'll see that we're at eighty-one percent, not sixty-three percent.
And that's a typo that will need to get fixed. So, thanks for noticing that, yeah.
We're always above average on snow removal.
So, I'll make sure that we get that fixed. So, thanks for checking that. When it comes to your parks and recreation system, you'll notice that the overall trend for the city's park system is definitely moving in the right direction. What really stood out to me is that you see your availability of walking and biking trails is up almost twenty points compared to a couple of years ago. The programs that you have, almost every area for programming has seen some significant improvements, even things like your artworks concessions and really just about every area that was rated, it seems, in real progress. There was a time back when we had done the surveys years ago, Blue Springs Park System really was setting the standard for the region. You're now back on track to be doing that again. As you can see by these charts, you can see all the areas rated above average. The one opportunity that you might have to do better, though, when we look at the important satisfaction analysis, has to do with the Centennial Swimming Pool. You can see it's becoming more important to residents. It's one of the lowest-rated areas, and it's also, you can see comparatively, one of the areas you're pretty much about average. And so, that may be something you look at in investment possibility in the future. Transportation, when I've been here in previous years, traffic flow concerns, and also the relationship that traffic flow has with community planning. I know it's an area you've put a lot of resources in, and you can see tremendous improvements in this area. Not only on the traffic flow and traffic safety issues, you can see double-digit improvements in most of those areas, but even your non-automobile areas have made a big impact. You see availability of bicycle lanes, that's gone up almost thirty percentage points in the last four years, from only one in four residents being happy to over half the respondents giving positive ratings. Pedestrian walkways as well are up almost twenty percentage points, and you can see across the board, whether it's during rush hour or at non-peak times, you see perceptions of traffic flow in your major corridors has improved. And when it comes to issues or concerns, it's still the traffic flow during rush hour. And that doesn't surprise me. That's typically the number-one traffic concern, but that's something to keep in mind again as you're planning for the future. Traffic safety barely made it into that bottom quadrant on Highway seven. Code enforcement, you can see if you look at the trends in code enforcement, little mixed over the last couple of years. The long-term trend is still fairly favorable, but if you look at the appearance of the city, you may recall when I was here in the past, we had some challenges, just perception of the appearance with trash and things like that around the city. And I know that was something that you took a conscious steps to address. And you can see from the 2006 survey until now, a significant improvement in the appearance of the city. Cleanup of litter and debris is also up significantly over the last four-year trend, then some slight decreases in a couple of the other areas, but the overall trend for all areas of code enforcement has improved when compared to 2006. And when you see how you stack up on the ranges, though you're making some progress, still a little bit below average in this area, and maintenance are probably a couple of the areas where you probably can do better comparatively as you move forward in the future. And when it comes to the issues of code enforcement, still debris, maintenance of residential property, mowing and trimming, all of them tend to fall in the same quadrant. I think they're all relatively equal when it comes to importance. So, there's not just... Unfortunately, it'd be nice if there's just one thing to focus on, and there's not. All of those will have some positive impact on residents if you put resources toward them. Now, with all the improvement that you might have seen service-related, it's probably not an accident or shouldn't be a surprise to this group that your leadership ratings are really tremendous. And one of the things that we often look at in communities is how much negativity is there about local leadership. And you can see that at most, you've got one in eight people who are dissatisfied. When you look at the ratio of positives to negatives, you can see it's four or five to one in most cases for all levels of leadership. And the overall trends in leadership just continue to improve. In fact, if you look at the leadership of elected officials back in 2006, only one in three people gave positive ratings. Now, it's well over one out of two. And I think it's because you've done a lot in the last couple of years. The things that people cared the most about three, four, or five years ago are things that you've really made progress in, and I think people believe you're moving in the right direction as a result. In addition to looking at services, we also wanted to take a look at some of the potential investment areas and some of the policy issues you might have. And you'll notice that one of the things that we looked for is the level of support for various projects that are being considered by the city. And you can see everything from public safety, communications upgrade, additional public safety personnel. I won't read the entire list to you, but typically, we use as a guide, what's the ratio of positives to negative, and is that at least two to one? And is the intent, the percentage of folks who are giving the positive at least one in four, you know, or excuse me, one in five, the twenty percent? And you can see, when you look at the percentages there, you've got at least a majority of folks who support each of those items. Everything from the South Park area on up to public safety communications equipment, all of those items have a majority of people that at least support it. The items at the top, your aquatic facility on up your public communication and equipment upgrades, all of those have very strong ratios of the intense positives, or those people who are very supportive, to the non-supportive. So, all in all, I think a lot of the things you're thinking about have potential. You'll notice that the general expanded public safety facilities has more of a neutral response, and I think that's because it's not quite as specific. In other words, I think it kind of depends. Where the more specific you got in equipment and personnel, you got a much stronger response than you did to the more general statement about facilities. In addition, we asked some questions, just about some strategies or policies the city might take a look at, and some general attitudes. One, should the city take proactive measures to encouraging existing and new business development along major business corridors? A slam dunk support for that. So, if you have people come in and say you shouldn't be doing that, remember that they represent one out of twenty people. So, that's a lot of people in the community, but generally, very strong support for that. The perception of your commercial areas compared to five years ago, tremendous positive ratings when you look at the ratio of positives to negatives, and the community's generally supportive of using tax and other economic tools to promote business development and such in the community. The last couple of questions we have are just some of the policies or issues that might impact quality of life here in the community, one of which is whether or not people are supportive of expanding the University of Missouri's presence here. And you can see there's strong support that. Only five percent of the people did not support it. Forty-six percent were very supportive, so a nine-to-one ratio on the intense positives to the negatives. And then developing commuter rail, you see it's about even with the intense positives to the negatives. Overall, you have forty-eight percent who are supportive, and then you have a group of folks in the middle not sure. And I think a lot of that impacts or what are the costs and things like that, that will ultimately impact long-term support. So, just to summarize, in my opinion, I think you have a lot to be proud of as leaders. You've done a lot the last few years to address what I think were legitimate concerns of residents, and you've invested in the right areas, and you're pretty much moving in the right direction across the board in just about every area. Still opportunities to do better, and I think that should be when you're looking to the future, not to basically say, hey, great, we did a good job the last three or four years, but where are you going to be, you know, another five years from now? So, Mayor, I don't know if you have any questions. I'll fix that typo in the report, but anybody have any questions of me?
Any questions, Mr. Taven? Any questions from the council?
Could we get a electronic copy of that? I don't think we had that in our packet. Some of the information was there, but yeah.
Correct it for me.
Yeah.
Again, we want to thank you for, and certainly, Eric, any comments you want to make. We want to thank you for another positive report. And I believe I said that, make this comment last year, we're happy to get those results, but we're not going to rest on our laurels. We're going to continue to press forward and see if we can bring even more numbers.
Your Honor, just a couple of comments. I appreciate the council's investment in doing the citizen survey, and I think we're on a schedule of about every fourteen to sixteen months on when we do this. And the survey supports investments that this council has made in strategic initiatives. And for example, one of the reasons we see the indicator on pedestrian walkways and bike paths increase so much is because of our success and finally being able to implement the project that we had received through MoDOT and the grant and the funds that this council had allocated. And that includes all the striping and bicycle lanes that you saw throughout our city, along Woods Chapel, Moreland School Road, all of the new roads where we've opened up, where we have dedicated pedestrian walkways. So, I just appreciate the input that we receive through this citizen survey. And as I indicated to staff when we began reviewing this information internally, we're pleased, but we're not satisfied. And we're certainly not satisfied with anything that is below average on our metropolitan benchmarks, and it's our commitment and determination internally that we move those blue dots?
Yellow dots.
Yellow dots, thank you, across the scale, and that we are leaders in the region in all of those categories. And I think when we look at some of the opportunities that we have to improve, obviously, the work that... that is currently going on with the Public Safety Advisory Board, and a work session that we're going to have with the city council on the fifth Monday of this month, we'll talk about some of our initiatives and opportunities for public safety. But again, appreciate your investment and willingness to spend the dollars on this instrument. It's very helpful to staff, and again, we're committed to using this information to improve ourselves.
Any other comments, questions, council members?
Yes, I think it is also great that we're working as a team, that there are many things already in the pipeline to help address some of these things, such as the bond issue on Woods Chapel. And I know folks have not seen anything happen, but there are lots of things going on with that as far as easements being obtained and so forth. So we certainly hope to see some of these move very significantly in the short haul with things that are already in the process.
And we will certainly get your blessing from Jefferson City.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other question? Again, Chris, thanks so much for that great report, and we look forward to the next 16 months, or however long it is for you to come in, and we will see that bar come in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Merrill announcements. My State of the City address is this Thursday, November 18th, at Avenue Point Conference Center. And I think people start assembling for the buffet meal about 11:30 somewhere in the neighborhood, so we trust that all council members can come to attend. And sometimes the schedule won't allow it, and certainly, we invite others to come and listen to us talk about some of the things that we're doing here at the city. And the theme for my message is we're on the move, which kind of fits in with what we just heard tonight. District Two Town Hall meeting is this Thursday, November, after you hear the State of the City's address. The District Two Town Hall meeting is November 18th, 6:30 at the Central Jackson County Fire Protection District Training Facility on 40 Iowa. The city offices will be closed on Wednesday, November 24th, and throughout the Thanksgiving holiday season. And we will have one other time to announce. The Mayor's Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be Tuesday, December 7th, at City Hall at 5:30 in the afternoon or evening since it's starting to get dark for the early. Those are the announcements. Now thoughts to ponder, since we are coming up on Thanksgiving, I found this in our bulletin, and it's by Jane Cruzen, and it's dated 1860. And the subject is "I Thank Thee," it's a poem. O thou whose bounty fill my cup with every blessing thee, I give thee thanks for every drop, the bitter and the sweet. I praise thee for the desert road and for the riverside, for all thy goodness hath bestowed and all thy grace denied. I thank thee for both smile and frown, and for the drain and loss. I praise thee for the future crown and for the present cross. I thank thee for both wings of love which stirred my worldly nest, and for the stormy clouds which drove me trembling to thy breast. I bless thee for the glad increase and for the waning joy, and for the strains of subtle peace which nothing can destroy." I think that's very appropriate for the Thanksgiving holiday season, that we all need to be thankful for the blessings that we have. That concludes the Merrill announcements, and that brings us to the visitor's section, of which I have no visitor or speaker appearance forms. No one to speak before the council. Seeing now, I'm going to accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't know? Please do.